Come on straight. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our February 7th, 2024 Select Board Meeting. I call the meeting to order at 7:01. If everyone could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business will be public comment. As a reminder, per the Select Board policy, public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between citizens in the Select Board. It is a citizen's opportunity to express his or her opinion on issues of town business. The Board may respond to a public comment by taking it under consideration when deliberating on an agenda item or referring the item to the administration for appropriate action or response. Public comment shall be for a period of up to 15 minutes, with speakers being allowed to speak for three minutes each. Is anyone here for public comment? Come up to the podium. Yep. You could just give us your name and address.
Yes, I'm Leslie Young-Lamir. I live at 120 Winter Street. I am the manager of the North Andover Thrift Shop. I am accompanied by a few of my board members. The thrift shop has been a presence since 1955 with a mission to encourage and reuse and recycle through the operation of a retail shop. Funds earned over the years have been reinvested into community organizations and scholarships. In light of the mounting environmental concerns and fast fashion, we are more relevant than ever. The original shop at 33 Johnson Street in the old center had about 800 square feet. When we gifted the land for the new youth center, Community Centers, Inc., specified the gift was conditional upon providing space in the new facility for the thrift shop. This was accepted as part of warrant Article 22, voted on May 12, 1997, is included in the deed to the land filed June 4, 1999, with Northern Essex Registry of Deeds. This promise was never met. The thrift shop was eventually provided space at the Schofield Mill after its purchase. When Articles 7 and 25 were voted on in 2001 respectively, they allowed the town to allocate funds with a proviso that renovations of the property would provide sufficient space for the thrift shop. The obligation to provide space for the shop was reaffirmed January 4, 2002, in a letter by then-town manager Mark Rees. While operating in 400 square feet at the mill, the thrift shop worked with town officials on some exterior envelope work done on the building, but the addition to expand never came to fruition. Four years ago, in January of 2020, the shop was evicted from the mill, building in an abrupt manner and without any notice. We have not had any space since, and were subsequently told that space would be available in what is now the vacated senior center. We were also told that we would be subject to an RFP, but recently advised that such space may be available for nonprofits, but no guarantees. At our most recent meeting in December, we were advised that giving us space would require similar treatments to other nonprofits, and were also surprised when told it was the town's opinion that they had no obligation to provide such space. We deserve to continue as a longstanding community organization based on promises that were made in 1997 and never fulfilled. Since the fire at 33 Johnson Street in 2000, we have been without space for periods totaling over five years, and we've never had equitable space as we had in the old center at 33 Johnson Street. The town should honor its commitment it made in exchange for the land, particularly since this obligation was voted on by the citizens of North Andover at a town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else here for public comment? So we'll move on to our first new business item, which is Wreaths Across America, and Jeff Clark and Peter Dolan? Chief Dolan, are you here?
Bill.
Bill Dolan, yes.
Good evening. So I'm Jeff Clark, the commander of North Andover Post 2104 of VFW, and we are here requesting the town cosponsor of Wreaths Across America to our Ridgewood Cemetery and then with ongoing missions for the rest of the cemeteries around town if this first year goes well. So some of the details behind it, Wreaths Across America, I'm not sure if you're familiar, but organization that provides wreaths at cost, well, you know, we've paid the cost and it's all in the letter here, but they provide the wreaths that we place and have a little honor ceremony in front of that person's grave, all veterans. And like I said, it's a great organization, Goes Across America. I'm sure you've seen pictures at Arlington National Cemetery and other communities in the area. So we're requesting that North Andover be part of that, like I said, at Ridgewood Cemetery. So I have a handout for each of you, if you'd like it, explaining kind of what it is and our intent, and then Chief Dolan here can explain a little bit more. He's going to be our primary point of contact for this, as well as Jeff Coco as a backup. So the numbers you see on here reflect both Holy Sepka and Ridgewood, but I believe that we should start a little bit smaller and go with just Ridgewood, which is 1,550 veterans' graves. We don't want to overstretch the first year and not make the goals. If we were to include both cemeteries, it would be about $50,000, give or take. We're working with the Veterans Service Office as well as the cemeteries themselves to get the exact number of veterans. We know what is at Ridgewood. We don't 100% know where everywhere else is, so these numbers are just estimates, but it is $17 a wreath. There's a QR code that goes right to the wreath that will come to North Andover, so anybody in town could click that QR code and pay. With your cosponsorship, we would like to get started pretty quickly on the advertising of this, because as you can see, at least $26,000 by next December. And then, you know, if we have the leftovers, we can look from there, and then if this goes well, obviously, again, next year. So, yeah, so looking for your cosponsorship on this. Chief, do you have any comments?
No, I was the instigator in this, and thanks to Skip Chaney downstairs at George Thompson House, which is no longer an active post. I went down to George Thompson last summer. I had been to a friend of mine back in a trip to Normandy in Utah, Omaha Beach, in October, which kind of the National Cemetery has kind of spurred me on to do something. And when I went to that, very emotional cemetery, and I would like to do something for all the cemeteries, even the cemeteries on Academy Road, on Berry Street, there's a cemetery up off of Berry Street, and there's actually a Civil War veteran behind the Brightwood home on Brightwood on 114, whose last request was to be buried behind that building. But I don't want to bite off more than we can chew in the first year. It's, we got into a program with Wreaths Across America, which will give back $5 for every $17 wreath we set. The wreaths are good-sized wreaths, have a bow on them, and when you place the wreath down, you are told, you look at the person's name, you say the person's name, you say thank you for your service, you know, I've forgotten, you put the wreath down. It's kind of an emotional thing, need a lot of volunteers, we're going to have to get around and get some, I think we'll do that. And then, if it works well this year, I think we should expand to all the cemeteries next year. But being the first year, and the Ridgewood has been very amenable to Scott Palumbo, and the Ridgewood is also a cemetery which we've spent CPA funds on from the town, so it has a, even though it's a private cemetery, it's a connection to the town, and it's probably the best non-cemetery. There is a Medal of Honor winner buried at the Ridgewood, and one of their primary goal is not just a wreath thing, it's to remember, honor, and teach, and they have on their website several teaching things, which I'm going to talk to Superintendent Gilligan about to see if they want to adopt some of that over the year. I'm going to talk to our historian, Han Amatid, and I've already talked to Brian Fraser, to see if we can do some spots on CAM over the year with certain veterans from North Andover to raise an awareness about some of the people that were in North Andover and served in various wars, some of the, all the way back to the Revolutionary War. So that's my goal, and I've already started, but haven't started anything concrete as far as pushing out the advertisement. On these flyers, there's a QR code and a website, and this is the one that people will have to use so that the VFW gets back the $5, not just the general website. And I've had those printed up and waited for this meeting to see what you would want me to do. My intent is to go to the department heads and see what, if there's any need that they might have with the police, that they need, how they need to be involved, because a few days before the ceremony, which is December 14th at noon time, there's a truck, a trailer going to come in with the wreath, because the wreaths would be delivered here, Beverly, Lynn, and all the way down the line. So logistically, I have to move that out, what they need, what the fire department need, what other people would need, DPW or anybody, and that's my first goal, is to see what needs the town would have, and then proceed.
Two other quick comments, sorry about this. So, as you can see in the flyers you have there, it talks about the money that's needed and the $5 that comes back to the VFW. We're a nonprofit organization, so that money would, by charter, by rule, have to go back to the community, so it's not like we're going to pocket. And then as well, the third slide that you see, the third piece of paper, that is just another sample of what would go on as a flyer for the community to see. So they're both, it's a little redundant from the other slides that you see, but I wanted to kind of a little sample of what that would look like. Ideally, make those poster-sized things from around town, push them out to other businesses.
Yeah, it's a great idea. You're back in the wreath business again, huh? We started years ago for the ones that got hung up our old door. Teasing them, and it was cold.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I understand kind of what the ask is from us from a sponsorship standpoint. Is it lending our name to it? Is it a financial ask, because to backstop donations? Or just to make sure I'm clear on what, I think it's terrific.
I think it's just to know that the selectmen support the program, and that when I go around to the department heads, they know that you've already given approval, so that I don't want to, you know, put somebody in a position and say, well, I have to talk to selectmen, if you've already given your approval, you're given approval, you know, they would know about it. And our intent is to work with everybody to make sure that this is an event that should bring the community together. We do it, Andover doesn't do it, Methuen does it, Haverly does it. So it's 1,500 wreaths.
To take undertaking.
I just want to make sure. All on us. No, no, that's, that's.
I mean, I'd like to see the flyer go out in the tax bills if we could, put a little thing in there.
So we're going to have to be a little bit careful, because we don't want to, if we put it in the bill, then it would open it up to anybody putting anything in the bill, right? So we want to make sure that we, so what I'd recommend is that we, we don't want to go back down that road. What I'd recommend is that we ask them to partner with the Veterans Office and let Joe kind of take the lead town-wise. I don't think there's really probably any action that you all need to take, yeah, but, you know, in the spirit of what we've been doing kind of with our new policies, have them go ahead and work with Joe and with the Veterans Office, as long as Joe doesn't, he's back there, as long as he isn't having opposition to that, I think that would probably be the most appropriate way to continue moving it forward.
And then as we get closer, if we need any coordination with police or fire.
And if it's something that Joe's partnered with, then Joe could easily put it in the newsletter, and so. Go on the website.
We're volunteering you, Joe.
Yeah, I'm tracking.
I don't think he would say no.
Is this something you expect, reach out to local Boy Scout troops and not to help from volunteers?
Yes, I'm already working with Boy Scouts and Cub Scouts as well. So they're, part of this whole mission is to educate, so we're adding that to the curriculum as well, to the Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts, so I'm already working that. I'm a den leader, so.
Excellent.
Former den leaders up here.
I've participated in other communities, and I know that it is a really meaningful and great event. I'd be happy if we can manage to have that in our community.
We're very grateful that you guys came to us, and so we can get the word out, and we can work with you and make sure that this is a success.
And we're sending you to Joe.
And we're going to send you to Joe.
Very good, very good hands.
But thank you so much, we appreciate your time and coming to let us know. So we look forward to it, in any way we can help.
It's great. I think the families are going to love it.
It's another great community event.
Madam Chair, do you want to vote to release the legal opinion, just in case the folks that are here for that don't want to stay and sit through the budget presentation?
Sure. So we'll move to Item E, which is our vote to release the legal opinion regarding the North Andover Thrift Shop. Tonight, we're only voting to release that opinion. We may have something on our future agenda to discuss it, but for right now, we're just voting to release it, so I'll take a motion.
I'll move to release the legal opinion regarding the North Andover Thrift Shop.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
We'll email that right over to you at the end of this meeting.
So we'll move back to Item B, which is approval of ARPA fund requests. We've got one for the commuter rail feasibility study for the commuter rail station, one for the middle school renovation addition, and one for materials and supplies for an emergency animal shelter.
So the department heads are here. If you have any questions for them, maybe it makes the most sense for them each to come up and kind of describe. Okay. So the first one is Andrew and Zach as well, or just Andrew? Just Zach. Not just Zach, Zach. Come on, Zach.
Hi, everyone, I'm Zach Melcher, staff planner here at Town in North Andover. The request is for ARPA funding for $45,883, and the objective of the project is to assess the value, opportunities, and constraints of a potential MBTA commuter rail station in the vicinity of Osgood Landing. The total project cost comes in at around $120,000, $75,000 of which we have state earmarked funds to allocate towards, and the rest of it would be covered by ARPA funding. Any questions about?
The one question that I have, and I don't know that it was in there, one thing that the town has not wanted is an idling station because of the noise and the smell, and we already have the airport, we have wheel brader, we have GLSD, and I can go on and on and on. This town does its part for the region. But right now, it's in Bradford, and they've been talking of moving it to North Andover for quite some time, so I would just hope that the idling's portion of it isn't part of the deal.
So this was something that we asked for, we put the earmark in for, and it's actually mostly exploring whether or not it would be possible to have a flag stop behind Amazon, so that employees would be able to basically take the train there and cutting some of the cars out. So that's most of the intent of this. I'm sure that they'll look at other spots as part of it. They'll also, in my experience, and Zach, I don't know if you've done one of these before, but the MBTA spends a lot of time looking at the timing of the stops and whether or not it would even work to put one there or not, but that's most of what our focus is, is trying to get the 4,500 employees who are going to be working at Amazon to Amazon.
Which is great, which is, which is great. And you're right, the stations are fairly close. When you go from Lawrence to Amazon and then to Haverly, and it's, they're pretty close, but it is what it is. You know, you've got to make it available, or they won't use it, so.
Am I correct that there's been a discussion before about a stop in the same area, right? So is there any information from that that was collected at that time that is relevant?
You mean years ago?
Yeah.
It included the idling.
I don't know the answer to that. I don't know anything more.
If there's any, there's no like studies that exist already, or it wouldn't really...
I thought at the time it was done by the state, and it came back saying that there wasn't enough, there wouldn't have been enough usage or ridership at that location to justify, but that was when it was the 40-hour overlay district, it wasn't.
There was no Amazon.
I don't think, at that point, Amazon wasn't in the discussion.
I knew there was history, and I was not.
Senator Steve Bedore, who was transportation at the time, or I forget what his title was, he really did push for the station just to be keeping the engines warm during the winter, and it's noisy and it's smoky, but I don't think you would want to have people riding the train and being right next to that either, so that would be, that's my only concern, is to make that work if we decide, or if they decide to go forward.
And who does the study? Is it the state, or is it?
It's Jacobs Engineering is the firm that we intend to move forward with, but waiting approval of funding and execution of a contract.
Gotcha.
And you mentioned it's potential as a flag stop, so that's essentially outbound stop that if there's a rider, it only stops when needed.
Could be, yeah, I mean, they'll do a full.
So they'll explore full feasibility of, could it be a commuter rail stop for residents as well, if they don't want to go Lawrence or God? Yeah, great.
There's a 284-page proposal that Zach has included, if any of us.
Very complex, very thorough. You're curious, yeah.
Could you read that out loud for us?
Okay. Then I will take a motion. I'll move that the Select Board approve the ARPA request in the amount of $45,883 for a feasibility study for a commuter rail station.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
We look forward to it.
Thanks, Zach. The next item is the middle school renovation, $100,000, and that could be either Laurie or Janice.
Go ahead, Laurie. You're the chair of that committee.
So the drainage at the middle school from the construction site to Main Street needs to be upgraded, and that's what this is, this request is for. It wasn't originally part of the construction scope, but it does need to get done, and so this is really the best time to do it, and it really fits in well with ARPA funding because of the water sewer connection. The entire amount is $140 and some change, and so this would just go towards that, and that would free up an extra $100,000 in the contingency. We think the contingency might be able to cover it, but we don't want to cut too close. So we'd like to, you know, request the ARPA funds to cover that, this portion of it, and then we don't have to take it out of the contingency.
And also, this work will set us up for the other work that is planned for Main Street, which is.
Very exciting.
Yep, so it all comes together. It's going to have to be done one way or the other. I mean, John can explain it better than I can, I'm sure, but it's not something we really have a choice on at this point, because it's going to be.
Yeah, in the situation, it would end up.
John, we're going to need you at a microphone, sorry.
So you get for sitting with that.
Everybody at home needs to hear you, too.
Yes, sorry. So, yeah, based on what the consultant and the engineer, which is kind of what I had suspected also, with the addition, it's kind of moving the drainage around the site on the middle school such that it would end up ponding in a place where we don't want that to happen. Today, it's not so much an issue because it's in a grass area, so not a problem, and it's only during heavy rain events when this happens. But again, with the, with the addition, it was going to move it, and I had known I had some, some issues in Main Street out front anyway, so I had already anticipated doing this, so just kind of work together. Upgrade on the middle school, I'll upgrade in Main Street, so hopefully it'll count for, for what's going on.
And also, while John's here, I don't feel like we appropriately embarrassed or applauded him for his employee of the year yet.
Thank you, thank you. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
The phrase was a killer. Appropriately embarrassed.
Thank you, thank you.
We've all been waiting for this, John, so could have been town meeting, could have been worse.
Yeah, yes, yes.
When will they be able to do the work?
July 1st.
Yeah, we're going to schedule it, I think, when school's out, was the idea.
Yeah, as soon as school gets out. We've already, the OPM's already contacted John about coordinating the schedule, so it all begins at the same time.
Yep.
And at Mr. Gon's request, making sure it is complete, like even the Main Street part by the time school is back in session.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yes, absolutely, yeah.
So this would be, be done regardless of the middle school expansion, is what you're suggesting, or?
So the drainage work, I had to do drainage work in Main Street anyways, and again, it just coordinated with the addition. So the piece that the middle school is doing because of the addition, that, that should happen, and I was going to, I was going to replace what's in Main Street, but in this case, it coordinates that I'm going to upgrade the pipe now to accommodate what's coming out of the, the middle school with the addition.
And we've got a lot of water.
You don't say.
You're talking about, you're saying the magic word is drainage.
Yes, wonderful drainage.
All right, with that, I'll take a motion.
I'll move the Select Board approve the ARPA request in the amount of $100,000 for middle school drainage work.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And congratulations.
And the final item is Chief Gray for $10,000 for materials and supplies for an emergency animal shelter.
So the ARPA request is for CSO Brad Dicenzo. We've had a couple shelters had to get set up over the past couple of years. One of the things we notice is we don't have a pet area, so this request is to purchase some kennels, the animals, in the event that we have to have a shelter that we can run ourselves as opposed to being overseen by any other entity.
Where would it be, Chief?
What's that?
Would it be in the station somewhere, or?
The storage or where the shelter itself?
With the shelter itself.
It depends on where the shelter is for the humans. It has to be off-site, different place, yeah. We're going to store them at the station.
It'll be so that they can have their animals.
Gotcha.
But they can bring their dog to a shelter and have it in a separate area.
If it's at the high school, we'd have some kennel set up at the high school.
Wherever we do it, yeah, off-site from the humans, but it's a, it's all a bunch of guidelines.
The Chief and I, and Laurie, and some of the lieutenants went to a training, and it came to our attention that if you don't allow animals, you actually don't get reimbursement, which is an interesting thing, but they showed us some pictures on how it can be set up, so it's a lot of tarp involved, but.
Are we putting a tarp with that money?
Yeah, a lot of tarp.
So unclear, someone gets displaced because of an emergency, they have to go to hotel, they have nowhere to put their, their animals, that kind of?
Even if, well, we did when we had the shelter at the senior center, we would have the animal shelter set up off-site, maybe at the, the old senior center down here.
Got it.
And they bring their animals here, they check them in, and then they go to the shelter and stay there.
Got it.
It would be lovely, because we were kind of allowing people to bring their animals in and then really, really hoping they kept them only on the linoleum floor in the new senior center, so this is a much better scenario for everybody, and those people won't have to worry about their pets and, you know, can deal with whatever the major issue is at hand.
Is it all pets? Because some people have some very unusual pets.
All domestic animals.
It's domestic animals, dogs and cats.
Snakes? Snakes, I know.
I don't believe snakes, I think snakes are fine for a couple of days by themselves. They'll be good.
There, there is data that they shared with us, that people do tend to not go to a shelter, then they need to go to a shelter because they don't want to leave their pets behind. So this is a big step in making sure that people have the protections they need.
I think it's great that you guys are thinking ahead. I'll take a motion.
I'll chair, I'll move approval.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So now we'll go on to the big show, the budget.
John, I saw you in here fidgeting with it earlier, I got kind of nervous. All right. This is a presentation of the fiscal year '25 Town Manager's Recommended Budget. We are presenting to the Finance Committee on February 29.
We are presenting to the Finance Committee on February 29. So this is just a breakdown of our revenues for this fiscal year, as well as pretty much going back to 2020. We are presenting a balanced budget within capacity as determined by all of our forecasting exercises and any additional information that we've learned since then. This includes the consideration of the advice of the Revenue and Fixed Cost Committee for both revenues and for our fixed costs. In fiscal year '25, the revenues for the budget total $130 million, which is a 5.02% increase from last year. That doesn't include any free cash that we're going to be using for our reserves and capital. Our property taxes are increasing by 6.4%, which is about $6 million. Local receipts are increasing by 1.8%, which is about $200,000. If I remember correctly, over the last couple of years, we actually saw local receipts decreasing due to COVID. People weren't buying cars because cars weren't available, meals tax was down, et cetera. Last year, local receipts increased by 4%. Now it's kind of slowed down a little bit more to where we would expect to see it. Local aid per our policies and procedures, which is also heavily debated, is level funded as usual. It's about a $6.2 million increase from fiscal year '24. So for new growth, which as you all know, but for the people at home, is governed by Prop 2.5. So Prop 2.5 allows the town to raise our levy by 2.5% plus any new construction, which is basically an improvement or a new building, plus any debt exclusions or overrides. I think it's really important to stress this year that we have no new large impact projects on the horizon. If we did, they would be in front of planning board or ZBA or talking to Paul and Jean, and we're just not really seeing that right now. So we do anticipate a very tight budget for the next three years. On the right is kind of a chart showing what our new growth has been since 2018. We've been exceptionally lucky, but unfortunately, I think that luck is about to give out. So typically, this lovely chart is created by Bill Mitchell, and I like it so much, I stole it for two presentations now. But this is what we typically see in a regular year, which is about $120,000 in new growth of residential, and that's like no major projects, not no huge residential things coming on, a new subdivision, a large apartment complex, just minimal new things, minimal commercial new growth, which basically usually is like somebody rebuilding out a store, types of renovations that we would see, minimal industrial growth, and then small amounts of personal property, averaging about $655,000. This year, we're projecting about $1.825 million in new growth, and that's largely because of the Amazon personal property. So you'll see, we're really not getting anything new in residential, really not getting anything new in commercial. It's really all based in that personal property area. And then looking at this, it kind of shows that new growth over the last 10 years. So you can see, yeah, we had that really kind of crazy blip in 2022, 2023, where we saw Amazon's new growth come on, but we've really historically stayed at that $500,000 to $700,000 mark for a 10-year period, and it's where we envision we will be for the next three years. I hope I'm wrong. I would love to be wrong, but it's where we think we'll be. This kind of shows a breakdown of what our revenues look like, so you can see the majority of our budget really is made up of property taxes, and the residential tax base makes up both 78.8% of that in fiscal year '24, we don't know yet for fiscal year '25, but you know that a lot of our budget really is built on the backs of taxpayers. For expenditures, the fiscal year '25 Town Manager Recommended Budget, all in, this includes all the state assessments, our reserve transfers from free cash, capital from free cash, but not water and sewer, is $136,782,788. So I show you this chart every year, you can see that education still is about half of our budget. Again, this really isn't a true number, it's really more like 67% to 69% because they have the shared services as well as the employee benefits, but the actual education portion that we budget is there. And then you can see that after that, our second highest is really employee benefits, followed closely by public safety.
What does support services include? Because I noticed that kind of doubled.
So that's our shared services, so that's facilities, IT, procurement, and the audit.
Okay.
And we have made a lot of changes in that division this year, which is why you, if you are watching this closely, that orange is bigger than it has been in the past. And then this just kind of gives you an idea over the year, so you'll, you'll notice that we have a new budget format this year, we're using the ClaireGov digital budget book. I know it's different for everybody, it takes a little bit of getting used to, it's different for us, and it's taken a little bit of getting used to, but they did have this chart, which I thought was handy, and again, kind of shows you how things have changed over the years. One of the things that I think is pretty telling, and you'll see it again in a moment, is just kind of the jump in employee benefits that we're seeing, despite being in the GIC and despite doing our best to keep those costs down. That's something that, you know, visually, you can see getting bigger as you're looking at these types of charts. And, you know, I think kind of important to note, too, is that 80% of our budget is people, right? Very limited what we spend on other things, so, you know, that kind of all is in relation when you think about it. Just a little breakdown of what this budget looks like. It doesn't include increases of 4.5% in departmental spending, excluding reserves. The municipal budgets are increasing by 3.14, education is increasing by 5.5, but it's important to note that they do have an additional $700,000 in the salary reserve that we are using for the middle school teachers. So if you remember from Facilities Master Plan 2, the goal was to use the first TIF payment, basically to pay for this. We've held this in the levy all this time, and we believe the teachers will actually be needed during the next fiscal year, but we kept it in the salary reserve because we don't want to do that until the teachers are actually necessary, so you'll see that as a transfer later. The budget book, because of that, is actually going to, one, show a smaller increase due to that, and the fact that we've made some, what I'll call operational inefficiency improvements that we'll talk about in a little bit, and the facilities budget that makes it look like the school's budget is increasing by 2.6% rather than the 5.5, but it is 5.5. So the municipal budget is increasing by 1.3, and the school's budget is increasing by 3.3. So just a chart talking about the historical education spending, this is always kind of something that people ask about, how are we investing in the schools? You can see since 2020, the school budget has actually increased pretty significantly. Again, we'll talk a little bit about this later, but we've actually moved $1.6 million out of the school budget and into support services. So this number, instead of being 62, is actually 64.3 million. So $14 million in increases since 2020.
Sorry, what was that number?
64.3.
No, the increase from 2020.
Oh, so it started at $50,487,000 in 2020, and today it's 64.3 million.
So 14.
$14 million, yep. So again, health insurance continues to be kind of a strange point in the budget. Usually I'm kind of bragging about what we save, this year I don't really feel that way. In fiscal year '25, our health insurance budget is going to be about $13.34 million. This was a year where the GIC went out to bid for plans. They're also, I think, suffering a little bit from the return from COVID, as well as the introduction of some of the weight loss drugs has been more costly to the plans. So we are expecting a 9.5% increase. We typically budget 6% and think that that's conservative, so the 9.5 is much more than we typically do budget. We are in the first year of our opt-out program. I do anticipate that we will see more people joining the opt-out program next year. Currently, we have 23 people in the program, so that was about a $200,000 savings for the community, for people who opted out, which is very positive.
Can you just explain the opt-out program?
Sure, so you have to have been in the insurance for two years, and you have to show proof that you're going on a family member's insurance, and if you are an individual, you have a $2,000 payment, and if you are a family, you have a $4,000 payment currently. And basically, what that means is that we're saving usually between $10,000 to $15,000 per person who takes that incentive, yeah. So that's a really positive program. We rolled that out this July 1st. I think there's a little bit of people waiting to see, like, you know, is it going to work? The payment is annual, so, you know, I think there's a benefit for people to do it. I know there's some people who are waiting to get to their two-year mark so that they can, they can opt out, but I do think that it's, it's going to be a benefit. Both Dee and I ran this program in other communities and saved $400,000, $500,000 doing it. We had, I had a slightly bigger population there, I think you did, too, but I do think we'll start to see more people buying into it, so. This is just a breakdown, thank you to Carrie for getting this to me, of the health insurance. So of that $13 million number, roughly half of it is school employees, 2.5 million is town employees, and 3.2 is our retirees. And then this kind of shows the health insurance over the years, this is kind of what I was getting at, that this has become kind of more of a pressure point. There's been, you know, you can see some years where we really haven't seen huge increases, but the last two years, we have seen million-dollar increases, and a lot of that is the market, but it's definitely something we want to keep an eye on as we move forward. We did look at whether or not it was worth us going out to bid this year to get new prices based on our risk portfolio, it is not at this point. So, but we will continue to do that in three years, we have that option again, so. So just some highlights and changes to the budget. We are continuing to try to build some efficiencies into the budget. You remember, we, in the past few years, we had postage, phones, electricity, and heating fuel that we consolidated, we're doing it now with coffee machine leases. We had an insane amount of coffee machine leases in every single department that were all being negotiated by John, so they're all being moved from those budgets to IT. So you'll see kind of people losing anywhere between $2,500 to $5,000, and that's just because it's being transferred over to the IT budget. We have the fourth year of the Finance Committee Reserve funded at 1.5 million. We have salary reserves for unsettled collective bargaining agreements again, and that is police and fire this year. Our COLA continues to be at 2%. We have the million-dollar debt holdover, so originally in the capital improvement plan, we had planned to use that for the AVECC. We are not going to be recommending that now because the AVECC came in over a million dollars, so the plan now is to transfer it to capital stabilization, potentially to be used for the rec plus. We have a new position at DPW, which is an additional tree climber, that's really what it's called, but is the person in the bucket truck, so we're trying to get a second.
That's a mother.
We're getting a second tree climber. We have a shared position in DPW that will be shared with facilities. It's mostly funded by APA, so it already exists, but we will be supplementing it with an additional $10,000, and it is going to be recycling and trash slash sustainability coordinator, so that person would be in charge of making sure that recycling and trash is going smoothly.
How much do you budget for that?
Yep, so.
Look, watch it out for us.
It's going to be great. And additionally, going to be dealing with BEV coordinator, BEV machines that we're trying to put in, working with Laurie on Green Communities, talking about composting and all those other things. So this, this position, I think, is going to be a fun position, probably for somebody maybe fresh out of school, but we are very hopeful that it's going to be a really good thing, and I think that with recycling and trash, you know, there's so many things right now that we could be doing, for instance, you know, checking the trucks before they go out, that kind of thing, we just don't have that kind of staff. So I think this is going to be a huge help, and it will take a lot of the burden off some of the staff now, who unfortunately is kind of constantly dealing with trash and recycling when they could be dealing with things that they should be dealing with, so. And then the major changes in this budget are really to facilities, so you know, facilities has always been a shared service. It's a shared service that was never really fully consolidated staffed or funded, which leaves us with kind of a difficult situation. And I will say that this is not unusual. I've worked in communities before that have a facility shared service, I think Dee has two. When they're created, they're created from a really good place, but there's a amount of distrust in sharing money that happens between the schools and the town, where everyone gets a little bit nervous that their buildings won't get priority. I think we've proven as a town, as a department, as a school, as a board, that we will not be doing that, right? That we work together, that we are willing to invest in our municipal buildings as well as our school buildings, and so there's this feeling of collaboration right now where we're going to do it. So we're jumping with two feet into this new department. We've moved all of the building maintenance costs from all the non-enterprise fund budgets, although we did find out today we may have moved a little too much from the fire department, so we'll change that to the facilities budget, and we've also moved electricity and heating fuel items from the school's budget to the shared services. So this should allow some amount of stability for Steve Foster as the director, it should allow for efficiency, it should allow him to better plan, and we're really excited about that. One of the things that that does is create some new positions, and it's using money that we already had, so we're not seeing any increases here, we're just reevaluating how we operate. So looking at this organizational chart, you can see Steve, he's orange, he's already here. Those three yellow positions are positions that already exist, and so they will not be new. We actually currently have the operations person out, and we will soon be beginning interviews for that person. You see the sustainability and recycling waste coordinator, we have funding for that already through APA. The part-time admin currently is Bernadette, and she's doing a great job, but this is the addition of a plumber, an HVAC person, and electrician. So in the last year, fiscal year '23, we know we spent $170,456 just on electrician labor. In plumbing contract, fiscal year '22, because that was the best data we had, it was, we spent $99,000, and for HVAC in fiscal year '22, just on labor, we spent $256,000. And so we feel like it makes sense to put these out to bid, see if we can get some, some candidates internally, and I equate it to town council, right? You have a great town council who works in-house and does all the day-to-day stuff, and sometimes we do, we might have a solar contract that we want to get a specialized solar person. We might have an HVAC issue that we say we want to bring our HVAC person in, but for the day-to-day stuff, it would be really nice to have somebody here who knows our buildings and can work with Steve and the team on kind of alleviating some of those issues. So this is our, our plan moving forward. I'm sure there's going to be questions about it, we'll do our best to answer them, but we don't anticipate any increased costs due to moving this plan forward. So that would take town staffing from '25 to '29. The new employees have been accounted for in Medicare, workers' comp, and all those other issues. There is some reduction in employees in the school budget, so I do not think it will interfere with health insurance in any way. We are, again, leaving levy capacity, we are doing that on purpose. I just, we, if you remember correctly, when we had the Amazon new growth come on, we took on a lot of it at the beginning because we had accepted a general law that allowed us to do that. This year, Amazon will have its TIF. They just asked us what account to wire the payments for the community development agreement to, right? So we know that they're actually going to be getting their occupancy permit soon, so we know their TIF is going to be going into effect. And remember, if we didn't do this, it could create a really huge, almost $1,000 per person swing on the average residential tax bill. So we're continuing to save that, and the next time we use that is when we bring the kids with teachers on. Okay, so it's going to be a commitment from all of us for the next four years to continue to keep levy capacity, and it's really hard. You could ask me and Lynn play this like, oh, God, what are we supposed to be saving? And, you know, and moving things around to make sure we're doing that, but that's essential to making Facilities Master Plan 2 a success, because if not, we would need an operational override. So the other two things that we usually talk about are the sewer enterprise fund budget and the water enterprise fund budget. As you can see, this sewer enterprise fund budget is actually going down a little bit despite there being a GLSD increase of about $140,000. The reason for that basically is that there's less capital transfers this year than we've done in the past, and we retained earnings to do those, but they're still budgeted for. Increases that you might see in this department and in the water department are really largely due to supply and demand for materials. We're still seeing that, and we saw it in the DPW budget, too, things are just costing more. So the water budget is going to be going up, but that jump is due to a large transfer to capital, as well as an increase to utility costs. One of the nice things about moving the utilities cost all to facilities is we don't have the departments kind of trying to figure out what the electricity bill is going to be, right? I mean, that's really difficult. Unfortunately, Tiffany doesn't have that luxury because she has to keep it in the enterprise fund and we have to have it separately. One of the things that's important to know is that the water retained earnings, so that's like the free cash of the water department, is $4.8 million, and the, I'm sorry, the sewer is 4.8, I got it right, the water is 4.8 and the sewer is 5 million. So just a little bit, talk about our reserves. We do have a stabilization account balance of $6.1 million. We are going to be proposing to put $80,000 into that through free cash, and that will keep us at the amount that's in our financial policies. In the capital stabilization account, we have $8.1 million. If you remember correctly, we really built that up over the last two to three years because we wanted to use it for the design for Kittredge and the fire station. Well, we're designing Kittredge and the fire station, which means that we'll be taking 4.4 million of that. We are proposing to put $350,000 into that in addition to the 1 million that we're taking from the operating budget. So that will be a $1.3 million transfer into there. Our OPAB is at $6 million. We'll be putting a $75,000 appropriation into there. And remember, last year I was so excited because our OPAB liability went down to 112 million. Now it's up to 119 million, so. But it's still not 144, which it was in 2021, so we can still feel good about it, I guess. The special ed stabilization account is at 797. I do anticipate we'll see an article at town meeting for about 205 of that because that was a funding switch for the teachers' contract. And free cash was certified at $12.1 million. We do have some free cash articles coming up. So we have the design of the 400 Great Pond Road demolition, which I put at 100,000. The Stevens estate, so the great news is, the Stevens estate came in above what they had to pay. So if you remember correctly, if they had revenue that was over $850,000, they had to pay a portion of that. So that $41,000 is their revenue above $850,000, so that's very exciting. Yeah, so we'll be transferring that over to the revolving account, which is currently sitting on the governor's desk about to be signed. So hopefully, we won't have to worry about this moving forward, which is great. We're using about $6.6 million, as you know, for capital. It's a little bit more than we've used the last two years. But if you remember correctly, when we did the capital presentation, we had a lot of requests this year, some of it due to the flood. For instance, we had the million dollars for the track, which was not on the capital improvement plan and kind of had to be pushed up. We have a retirement payout, so we typically have retirement payouts of about $25,000 to $50,000 a year. This year, we have a bunch of retirements all at once. So we said, you know what, this is not a one-time thing. Let's use free cash rather than increase the budget for it. So we're putting that in. And then, if you remember correctly, last year, the fire chief put forward a new revolving account for CPE, and that's for payment we get, some of the payments we get for ambulance. Money has come in for that, but before the revolving account was approved. So that will be transferred out of free cash and back to his revolving account, which he'll be using to pay for ambulances and ambulance repairs moving forward.
What does CPE stand for again? Well, Graham, someone's gotta know. All right, we'll come back to it, we'll come back to it.
I should, I should have known better than. Come on up, chief.
Right on the tip of your tongue, right?
Graham's like Googling it back there.
First, my EMS coordinator will be slapping me with a ruler tomorrow morning when I go say it. Basically, what CPE is, it's a program that the state runs. They've offered it for the last five years, I believe, we've been involved in it. It makes up some of the difference, we can apply to the state. If we take a private resident, if we take a resident with private insurance to the hospital and the ambulance, currently our rate is $1,500 plus mileage for our BLS, basic life support transport. If we transport somebody who's on, under Medicaid, our billing is somewhere around $340 for the same call. So the state created a program, they've rolled out, they, they do it every year so far, they've rolled it out. And like I said, we've been involved for five years, where we can do an absorbent amount of paperwork. But if we do it, we can get some of the difference back. Bring some of the money back to the ambulance services to help offset some of the costs. And the deputy and my EMS coordinator spend about three and a half weeks crunching numbers. And I won't bore you with some of the depths of it. But we've been able to bring back, last year we had 174, 76,000, I believe. The year before was 164,000. This year, we're anticipating 168,000. And it gets adjusted, it went up actually a little bit last year. So what we had done last year is with town manager, we, and Lynn, we were able to set that up. So that extra money that we're bringing back in now is being put in an account to help offset the ambulances, like the ambulance we're looking to buy now. Instead of, an ambulance right now is $430,000 to buy one coming in the door. We're able to offset considerable costs just by our revenue, and that's off for two years. The plan is, if the state keeps doing this program and we keep bringing this kind of money in, it's our, it keeps going up every year because our call volume, that hopefully this will be able to allow us to replace the ambulances on a regular basis and keep maintenance on them without having to go to CIP every five years and ask for, you know, getting close to half a million dollars for an ambulance each time, so. And hopefully keep us newer ambulances and less maintenance costs, so.
All right, thank you.
So at the end of all that, we will still have about $1.2 million in free cash left. I will say, this was a difficult budget year on the town side. There was a lot of no's and a lot of disappointment, I think, but all of the department heads were very gracious in kind of hearing that. And so, and I, and I think everyone's kind of taking a leap of faith on our changes that we've made for facilities, and that we're gonna have some growing pains and work together on it. But I'm very thankful for this team because they really have been very gracious. I know many of you came to my office and found me surrounded by PIBs. And, you know, they've all found that too, and it's been exceptionally helpful. But no one's more helpful than Lynn, and this is her last budget with us because she retired.
It's a congratulatory clapping, not that we're glad that you're leaving.
Good for you.
It's been a pleasure.
Right?
But you were the first one to start clapping.
23 years is a long time.
23 years.
Congratulations.
In her last year, she decided she's gonna digitalize both the capital process and the budget. So most people are just like, you know, I'm cleaning things up.
Stay along to the proving, right?
And how many awards in those 23 years?
I'd want every year, wasn't it?
We had to get a new plaque this year because she filled the plaque, so.
Amazing.
Yep.
Thank you, thank you for everything.
So you know we have all of our department heads here. We're happy to answer any questions you have tonight. I know you just are getting comfortable with the book. We're also happy to come back and answer any questions too. But if there's anything we can answer tonight, just let us know.
We kind of asked all the questions while we were going on, but I don't have any further questions right now. I'd like to go through it too.
It's pretty complete, Lynn.
Good.
Yes, town manager is pretty complete, so I don't really have anything right now.
And ClearGov is really helpful.
Are you seeing the slowdown in new growth in surrounding communities? Or are we unique in that, or?
I think we were unique in the fact that we had all that new growth. The Amazon, and then the apartment complexes that all came on at once. Nobody else was seeing that. So when we were having conversations about the new growth that we were seeing, when we meet with like our counterparts in other communities, they were kind of looking at us like we were crazy. I think we're just going back to what everyone else already had.
And they're all remaining consistent.
And they're all remaining consistent, yeah. Which is why in some ways, this may be a little bit more painful for us because we've gotten to say yes a lot the last few years, and now we're gonna be saying no a lot more. And we'll continue to be creative, right? I mean, like the chief CV revolving account, the revolving account for when we sell vehicles, selling vehicles on muni bid, evolve in ways that we'll be able to get to saying yes on things that perhaps have been difficult in the past. And also, just the amazing job they've all done on grant writing really helps, right? I mean, I don't know any other community that gets the number of grants that we do, but I do think, you know, I think we're just returning to where they've been, and we've just been exceptionally lucky. The good news is, APA, APA, I'm trying, is ending. But the community development agreement with Amazon is kicking in, right? And remember, that's $300,000 a year for steam and STEM. That's $175,000 for speeds. There's money in there for traffic mitigation. So there'll be new money for us to kind of spend that other people don't have. But I do think we're entering a more difficult period.
I'm exceptionally excited about the facilities piece of this and hoping that, you know, it just makes it a little bit easier for people to keep track of what needs to happen and making sure that we can prioritize really well, so.
And I think giving the facilities department the resources they need to be the best facilities department, right? If we don't give those resources, it's very difficult to keep our buildings to the standard to which we expect them to be. So I'm excited to kind of have all of that available. And all of it kind of under one person's control so that, you know, they have the ability to make decisions that are the best.
And you're anticipating as a part of that that there should be some financial efficiencies overall, right? That you should essentially save money, both in terms of the operation?
I don't think we'll save money, I think we'll see a better product.
Okay.
You know, I think at this point, I mean, and we've talked about this a lot. I'm not sure that we're, I'm not sure we've always invested enough money in maintaining our buildings. I'm hoping that we'll have a better use of our money now, and that will help us to have a better product. That's what I'm hoping for.
It'll allow us to be proactive instead of reactive, too.
Yeah. Steve has done so much with so little. So imagine what we could do with like a normal amount of money. So I think that, I think we'll just see a better product.
And that's kind of where you're talking about with these new facilities positions, right? You're essentially swapping out money we were paying elsewhere into full-time positions to have that work done, not saying that we'll never go outside again. So make sure, I'm kind of repeating back, I think, what you said earlier, just make sure I fully understand that.
Right, we may, we'll still go outside for some things because we just have to, right? We don't, you know, I don't expect any of us to have all the expertise that we ever need. We go outside in HR, we go, we have an auditor who comes in, right? We always have other people who come in to help. But having the skills in town hall that if we need somebody to come in because, you know, Lynn's HVAC isn't working, and not to have to call a consultant to come in and pay by the hour would be pretty huge.
Right, and the labor cost would be taken on is not gonna be $256,000 in a year, okay.
No.
So some savings.
Yes, oh no, well, so these things there, I just think that what will happen is, that person will come off what they get paid, and the rest of the money will hopefully go into investment in our buildings.
Right.
Maintaining, upgrading.
Yeah.
More efficient use of.
Yeah.
And for the record, CPE stands for Certified Public Expenditure.
There we go, thank you.
Maybe someone had Googled it here, right?
I feel like Mrs. Dot sent that to you.
One quick question about, back to the health insurance piece of it. Those increases that we've seen, is it because the GIC has increased their premiums? Or is it because we are paying, we have more employees and we're paying more? Or is it a little bit of?
So the schools definitely have more employees than they had in the past. So the population is definitely bigger. It's probably a combination of the two. Costs are up, right? The GIC told us to plan for a 9.3% increase. That is pretty unheard of. Part of that was because we went, this was, this was a year where they did their RFPs, I was gonna get that out, they did their procurement. But, you know, another part of it is just because health insurance is increasing. The market is different than it was before. There's been more than one insurance company that has merged, so there's less options in the market. So I think that that's kind of added to it, too.
How, if you know, how frequently do they do the RFP process, like?
It's every three years. Do you know I'm on the commission? So I, yeah, so we went through the, we just went through the RFP process. There will be no plan design changes this year.
Okay.
Usually if they do plan design changes for savings, they set, they try to set the table for that, like a whole year in advance. But it's really difficult to do plan design changes under rate increase at the same time, right? That's not very palatable to users, so. And I, but I will tell you that no municipalities voted to leave the GIC this year. And I believe one regional school district voted to come in. So we're not, they're not seeing a lot of movement.
I just had a question on the capital stabilization account, that 4 million. It's the Kittredge design.
And the fire station two design.
Is $4 million?
Total of those two. So I believe the Kittredge is about 3.6, and the fire station's about 850. And I've asked Laurie that probably 14 times. So that's why I'm looking at her. I just keep asking her.
That's just a big number, so what, could you just, like, that includes the design?
So it's full construction docs, the full construction docs and the bid docs.
Right, and our, yeah, which is a lot.
It's a lot, yeah. So it's usually about 10% of what you think the project's going to cost, right? Don't forget, we, so we budgeted a certain amount already, that leaves me, for Kittredge to do the feasibility portion, 850? 950, that's close. Oh, let's put these, 900. To do the feasibility portion. And we always put this 3.6 million, because we've had this 3.6 million number for the last four years. We purposely took it from one-time revenue that came from Amazon and put it into the capital stabilization account to save for this exact purpose.
And that, go ahead.
If not, we would have to bond design, which none of us would want to do, right? So the plan and kind of what the strategy always was, was to try to save as much money as we could in debt holdover and from that one-time revenue sources to just offset as much Facilities Master Plan Two as possible. And so far, right, that's been the goal. We are able to do the middle school with no impact at all to taxpayers, which is huge. We'll be able to do these two designs with no impact, and we don't actually have to go for debt exclusion until 2028, so.
No, I think, it's just a big number, but I just want people to know that it gets us through construction. It's all the subconsultants, like, it's a lot of things coming under that.
Full design of the building. And then remember, MSBA is covering a portion of that building as well, as long as we continue to do all the right things, which we are. And I think last time we talked with them, it was around 42% reimbursement, so.
That's great.
Yeah, amazing.
That's amazing. And then Stevens estate looks great, and that money's gone into the capital plan.
Yes, and Laurie has a presentation that she'll be giving to you at the February 27th meeting about, I know you've already all seen the changes at the actual estate, but about all the changes that happened at the gatehouse. And she has lots of pictures. And then she has a capital plan prioritized that she'll be showing you on the 27th as well.
And here's hope, can they book all the things about that for the next year?
It's beautiful, they did such a, yeah, they did such a nice job.
I mean, the fact that in the second year, they surpassed $850,000 is pretty amazing.
It's awesome.
And they've been a really good partner for us as well, so we're excited to continue to work with them.
Excellent. Any other questions? Thank you so much to everybody.
You'll make it easy.
And you're all gonna stay, right?
Except for Dawn, Dawn will stay with us.
All right, we'll move on to item D, which is our vote to allow the fire chief and the police chief to participate in collective bargaining.
So basically, we have invited the two chiefs to participate in collective bargaining. Again, it's a huge benefit to the administration because they are there to help us with all of the administrative questions. Dee and I, and Andrew and Laurie know how to do a lot of things. We don't know how to be a police chief, or a fire chief, so it's very helpful. But since they both have language in their contracts that does tie their COLA to their unions, they do have to file these disclosures. And because you are their appointing authority, you do have to vote on them.
What's the practice in other communities, is this pretty standard?
Everywhere I've worked, the chiefs have been in negotiations, Dee?
Same, it depends on the contract language. Not all contracts tie the chief's COLA to the union.
This isn't the first time we've done this.
This is the second time.
Take a motion. I'll move that as the appointing official for the police chief and fire chief as required by Mass General Law, Chapter 268A, Section 19, we have reviewed the particular matter and the financial interest identified by the municipal employees and have determined that the financial interest is not so substantial as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of the services which the municipality may expect from the employees.
I'll second that.
Well, that was a lot better than mine, I was just gonna say.
I have a motion and a second, any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we did item E, so we'll move on to the appointment of Kate Delisle as the teacher representative for the middle school building committee. There has been a vacancy for a bit.
Yep, we had one teacher who could not continue with the commitment, and Mr. Goncalo worked really hard to find someone else who wanted to join in. We're excited to have her and look forward to it.
Excellent, and I will take a motion.
I'll move the select board to appoint Kate Delisle as the chief representative in the middle school building committee.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome to Kate. Item G will be the signing of the warrant for the presidential primary, and we have our clerk, Tom Warren, here. Any thing we need to?
We're having an election.
We're just having, just standard having an election? Okay, then I'll take a motion.
And they're already working really, really hard on it, so.
Yes, how many elections this year? Four, four elections, so very busy in the clerk's office this year.
I'll move the select board to sign the warrant for the presidential primary as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Dawn. So we will be moving on to our consult items. We will be accepting a grant from FDA to the health department in the amount of $62,500 for food safety. A grant from the Department of Environmental Protection in the amount of $157,092 for EV charging stations. A donation from the Friends of the. of $157,920 for EV charging stations, a donation from the Friends of the Stevens Memorial Library in the amount of $1,000 for program supplies, and a donation from Julie Doe and Kelly Bliss in the amount of $200 to the Fire Department.
I think Brian wants to tell us about his grant. I think you just transposed your number. Because we were like, oh. I'm sorry, 26. You get an extra $40,000. 26 is pretty good.
Sorry, 26,000. Thanks, Brian, for being here.
Thanks for having me. I want to introduce Annette Garcia, who is our new shared services coordinator, who's managing our public health excellence grant. We potted up and applied for an FDA grant as well. It's a small amount of money, but it's going to start us off getting standardized through the FDA for our retail food inspection program. So this is just the initial phase. It's a small amount of money to help us do a self-assessment and a comprehensive strategic improvement plan. The majority of this is going to go to hiring a third party to come in and assess our retail food program. Take that, come up with our plan, and then apply for more money next year.
I think that's it. Really, the purpose of these standards is to help improve our existing food safety program and bring us up to a national standard. These standards were created by the FDA through rigorous evaluation of other exemplary enforcement agencies. So it's really just going to improve our already robust food safety program. And like Brian said, once we complete this initial phase, we'll be able to apply next year for a three-year grant cycle of additional funds to continue our progress towards meeting those standards.
And is this for, like, I'm sorry, supermarkets and?
This is for retail food inspections, restaurants, supermarkets, everything in between.
Well, it's really important.
Yeah, it's very important.
It's really important.
She can save, for sure.
How are we doing overall in terms of food?
Actually, we're doing really well. We've been doing well for a long time, but this will bring us to a new level.
Great.
Madam Chair, I'll move that we, that the select would accept all consent items as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Keep getting those grants.
Yes.
Thank you for getting it.
Keep it up.
Half this agenda is about grants.
Thank you for your hard work on that.
It's a lot of work to apply for grants.
It's so much manpower.
It is, but there's a, everyone kind of really just goes for, I think it's become competitive in some ways.
I think we should actually turn it into a competition.
Who got the most? And then, who got the, who got the biggest number? And then, who got the most?
Frequent. We have a good pizza party.
You can earn a pizza party.
And thank you to those that donated to the library and to the Fire Department. We'll move on to the approval of minutes from our January 22nd meeting.